Guess I better bring the meeting to order. Excuse me, this is the February 27th, 2024 meeting, Celine County Planning and Zoning Commission. I will open up the meeting by a motion to consent the agenda as printed. I make the motion that we approve the agenda for tonight?
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. We approve the agenda for the February 27th, 24 meeting as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The meeting agenda is approved. My second item will be approval of the minutes of the November 28th, 2023 meeting. Any discussion or any review on those minutes? If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the November 28th, 2023 meeting as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The minutes of the November 28th, 2023 meeting passed as printed. The next item, text amendment 2401. I'll turn it over to staff.
Okay, this will be a consideration of an amendment to the zoning regulations, section 13A, 12.13, commercial wind energy conversion systems to include possible language addressing any currently recognized alternative energy sources and incidental uses associated with them. The commission wait will be presented with options to include provisions for wind, solar, and any associated secondary uses. This is actually staff-initiated review. It's going to be basically be addressing some additional languages as mentioned. The supplemental uses that could also be considered are such things as battery energy storage facilities. In 2017, the zoning regulations were amended to include provisions for commercial wind energy conversion systems under this section 13A, 12.13. Currently, our regulations do allow for onsite small-scale solar facilities used for supplemental power for an individually-owned parcel or use. Larger-scale solar facilities tied to the electric grid and occupying more than one parcel are currently not addressed. Staff have investigated several counties in the region and have included their solar facility provisions for you to review. This includes the counties of Pawnee, Kingman, Allen, Douglas, and Miami. Should also be noted that Johnson County, which I have not included in your attachments, has identical language on battery energy storage within their solar regulations as Douglas County does. So the following items and questions to consider in the development of provisions for alternative energy facilities and their accessory uses are as follows. One of the items that you would consider, the first thing, would be the comprehensive plan. Basically, the question that you need to ask is although the county has adopted provisions for commercial wind power, could larger-scale solar and other alternative energy infrastructure be suited or cited as to not have a detrimental impact on the rural character of the county? Item two would be safety issues. The commission could discuss items which would include feasibility of emergency response from fire districts and proof of projects' compliance with NFPA, NEC, safety requirements. And based on recent public feedback, the commission may consider language about seismic testing specific for the area for all facility elements. The other items would be any projectile impact testing available on all facility elements. If none such exists, the commission may include language requiring such testing. The other item would be any environmental testing as required by the EPA, KDHE. Item three would be acreage limits. The commission may consider an acreage cap for solar and wind facilities. This could include a per-project limit. So in other words, if someone is proposing a 200-acre facility, we could have regulations that say you're only limited to 100 per project. The other item would be a county-wide acreage limit. That would mean capping it at like, let's say, the county's going to reserve, let's say, 2,000 acres dedicated to this type of facility. And once that cap is reached countywide, no other additional requests can be submitted. Item four is a pre-application outreach. That would be consider requiring an applicant to consult with or send notice to non-participating property owners within a specific radius of the project prior to submission of an application for conditional use permit. Bonding and financing. Staff would strongly consider including language on the requirement of a performance bond, not a letter of credit, to be submitted in an amount satisfactory to the county engineer. Decommissioning. Consider language on decommissioning there as we currently do for wind energy, I would point out. However, there are currently three methods for decommissioning that you can consider. And that would be removal of the facility at the end of its useful life. One method would be to detonate. This is applicable to wind turbines and solar cells. The second is falling, cutting off at the base and letting the wind turbine hit the ground. This causes both these first two cause scattering of debris and potential contamination of the soil. The third option that we would consider, and also many counties have already kind of adopted, is reverse construction, which would basically mean disassembling the wind turbine, solar facility, or battery energy storage facility in reverse order from the way it was installed initially. So you take it apart piece by piece. Options for the commission for this evening would be to direct staff to develop language alternatives to consider for an amendment to 13A, 12.13, to be reviewed at the next meeting or table for further evaluation and discussion of the submitted information that I've provided you. Or item three, make no changes to 13A, 12.13. And with that, I've given you quite a bit of material to kind of go over. I know some of those counties are redundant. It looks like they made kind of like copycat. But some, I think the ones that was commented on before the meeting was Douglas County seems to be the one that's the most stringent. And so if you feel comfortable with kind of reviewing that, or if you've reviewed it enough, you feel that you're ready to kind of discuss amongst yourselves as to what provisions, which direction we should go on this, or as I say, you can either make recommendation, or you can make a direct staff to either put together a language for you for an amendment, or say really, based on your own discussions, whether or not it's even, this is something we would want, you know?
Does that complete the staff report?
That's my staff report.
That's your story and you're sticking to it?
I'm sticking to it.
Okay. Well, I'll bring it back to the commission. And I guess at this point in time, I will open it up to the public for public comment. I'd like you to hold your comments to five minutes as we normally do, and state your name, address, come to the podium. We're ready.
My name's Danette Toon. I live in Mentor, Kansas, at 5340 South Maxwell Road. I just have a couple of comments about this. I certainly understand the process, and I know that you all have been talking about having some of these policies and procedures. And I know when we were here last year talking about the battery storage facility, one of the things that we had advocated was that we look at some kind of policies and procedures that would be in place before you move forward with a conditional use permit. But the thing that, as a former manager, one of the things that I would want to know is, and I did notice that there were five counties in here that had done it, but there are also counties that have not done it in terms of very specific decision matrices that they have looked at and said, no, we don't want to implement that. And I think that's equally important to know, not just that there are counties that have done it and what that looks like, but that there are counties that have purposefully not done it. The other thing that I would say in terms of what I would want to know is, what are the pros and cons to these kinds of industries on the economy, on the economics, on the ecology, everything that it has to do with? I would want to know why we would even be looking at these sorts of things. One of the things that kept coming up on the battery storage was the dollars. It was all about the dollars. And I certainly, as a former economic developer, I understand the dollars of projects. But sometimes, and a lot of times now, we have to look at a lot of other things other than just the dollars associated with it and the tax revenue that will be coming into the community because there are a lot of other ramifications to the project that we saw with the battery storage potential. So I would ask that you get clarification as to what the pros and cons are of these industries. I'm hearing a lot more ecologically about the cons of these kinds of industries. I used to live up in Concordia where wind is a big part of the curriculum that we did at Cloud County Community College. And so I do have an understanding of some of these things, but I also know that you need to understand both the positive and the negative before you move into putting together policies and permits. Thank you.
So, excuse me. So do you have any specifics on that?
I don't. I just got notification of this topic in the midst of a few other things, so I didn't really have a lot of time to research it. But I know that as I've looked through things over the last several months, that I have been seeing more and more negatives associated with these alternative energy kinds of...
Do you have specifics or just generalities?
I don't, but I would be happy to do some research. I love researching, so I just haven't had the chance to do that yet. But I'm happy to pull together whatever I can. So I guess in that regard, I would advocate that at the very least that you look at tabling this topic until maybe we can bring back some of those pros and cons.
Well, as staff mentioned, this is a multi-meeting issue.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
We would appreciate your input.
Okay, I'll be happy to do some research. Like I said, one of the things I love to do, so.
You're hired.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is, well, I don't want to open up the can of worms what we went through. So who's next?
I'm Teresa Swisher, 4853 East McReynolds Road. And I would like to ask you to consider a few other things, like the Department of Energy has a lot of information and a lot of guidelines on what they recommend you look at and implement in your processes and regulations for battery storage, solar, wind. Also, Kansas at this point does not have any legislation on any of these things. And until there is, there's not a lot of teeth in whatever regulations you guys put forward. The other thing I would like to see you talk about, consider, would be to hire, you guys hire the Department of Energy, some consultant to monitor, regulate, and give reports to you guys on the progress if you guys would happen to go forward with this. I would like to see you table this whole thing until the state of Kansas gets some regulations in place. And there really hasn't been any test of anybody's rules and regs in the state of Kansas. If you're looking to see what the people that have experienced solar things, solar issues, look in the state of Texas, Arizona, and New York for battery energy storage. They've all experienced some things that maybe they could give us some more insight. But that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
And I have included in your packets information, the NFPA fact sheet. That's kind of to start that way.
There was one of them that...
Come back to the podium. You're on TV.
Which side? There was one of the counties, and I'm not sure whether it was Allen or Douglas, maybe, was talking about National Fire Protection Association, 855.
It's Douglas.
Okay, I was thinking it was. But 855 is good, but what about all the rest of the articles in the NFPA they have? 855 is just too limiting to say, we're just going to keep it with this. I think we have a long ways to go, and I'm confident we'll get there.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Yeah, I agree. I think there should be...
Name and address.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Mike Jensen, 5694 East K4I O.A., Gipsum. And this is too big. There's too many people out here that are involved in this stuff, or they were proposing to do this, the battery thing, the solar thing and stuff that you guys need to hold off or do a lot more research. I don't think on the battery thing, I think the staff did a lousy job of researching it. Mr. Alvarez, he did a little bit looking online, and he saw the burning and stuff. The staff, they were clueless. I think that also the staff took, Gipsum newspaper took, wrote an article when they started this process here, and they were instructed to write a retraction because they said that the battery and the solar thing were kind of joined together. They weren't joined, but they kind of worked together and stuff. At the past county commission meeting, the staff got up and said to the county commissioners that the batteries and the solar go hand in hand. So we're getting one story on one hand, one story on the other. We need to take and really delve into this before you guys approve anything. So I just, we need a whole lot of public input on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Well, I will close the floor for public comment and bring it back to my commission. Do you have any comments for staff on the issue?
Mr. Chairman, if you can hear me?
Oh, there he is.
I'm on the wall. Just a comment, based on the feedback we have so far in the meeting, you know, that we table it or don't move forward. The only concern I have relative to that is if we don't do anything at this point, then we haven't created the framework to either approve or disapprove, unapproved, projects in the future. So I don't know, I think we probably need something in place at some point. We need to work at it, make sure we have it right. If we don't do anything, then we really are in the same boat we were last fall with nothing to...
Right.
Hold our decisions on.
Good comments, Ken. Thank you.
Well, I can agree with Ken. I mean, renewable energy is going to be here regardless.
It's here. I mean, it's a tremendous subject. I don't want to be able to get focused on what we did last fall.
I don't either.
I don't want to hear another two months of discussion.
I don't want two months of generalities either.
We're moving forward.
Yeah, I'd rather have a framework going forward of what we can...
And I guess...
...approve or disapprove.
I'm looking at, are we looking at really three things here? We're looking at solar, we're looking at wind, and we're looking at storage. Is that the way I'm kind of seeing things?
Right, right. Now you have, we have adopted pretty stringent wind regulations. It could probably be tweaked a little bit as far as the decommissioning aspect of it. But as far as, for the most part, the wind is okay, but if you feel like it has to change, we can reexamine it, too.
Other comments?
I have a question. In the other guidelines from the other counties, is the wind and the solar and the storage all combined into one singular?
Douglas, they have combined the battery energy storage with the solar. They've combined the two in the same ordinance. However, the wind regulation is separate.
Okay. It still has specific regulations and requirements for each one individually?
Right. And so that's basically what all the other counties have done as well. Allen did that as well. They've got separate for wind and separate for solar. So but other than that, I mean, you have either the option of combining those two or keeping everything separate. That's the other thing I was going to say. We can just separate all of them. Battery energy would be separate from the solar, from the wind.
And that's what I think we should, because I mean, we can't digest all this in one meeting.
Right.
Well, let's kind of have a discussion of get our wind together, get our solar together, and get our battery storage together instead of trying to put in one...
So you want to leave the wind the way it is right now?
I'm just making comments that I'd like to sit down and discuss wind. Okay? That's it. Then we'll move on to, when we all feel comfortable, let's move on to solar, when we feel comfortable. Then let's move on to battery storage, instead of trying to intermingle all this into, well, let's make a motion to pass it. No, I'd never agree to that. There's too much to discuss here.
Well, in the end, what you'll do is the way the resolution will work is the language that's in the resolution will be either to include, like, let's say, like what Douglas County did, and include the battery energy with the solar, because sometimes they tend to go hand in hand. But the other is, you have the option of not doing that and saying, we're going to separate those out. You can still discuss each one individually.
Right.
But the resolution that you're going to direct staff to do is going to reflect whatever you guys want me to do.
Right. I don't see a problem with us taking six months to figure out our resolution.
But I also don't see a reason not to move forward. I mean, if we have nothing, it seems to make it easier.
To get it wrong?
Well, if the regulations only make it harder for things to come, not easier.
And make sure that we've got everything covered. That's the one thing I liked about the Douglas County one. That is probably the most thorough that I've ever read.
Yeah, I'm kind of, thinking back, I'm kind of surprised to hear those words come out of my mouth because...
Well, nothing comes out of that word. I don't even know they were still a county, you know?
Yeah, I'm not one that advocates for regulation, but in this case, doing nothing makes it easier for something to come.
Could we maybe take that and have a study session, and let's just tear theirs apart and start coming up with some recommendations? I mean, there's a lot of information to digest if we're going to talk about all these.
Well, what we could...
How do you guys want to handle it?
I don't, I don't know. That's...
I do have one question.
I mean, this is a stack of stuff.
Exactly. We're not making a motion on...
You're not making a motion to...
What's happening on this.
And that's what staff would recommend.
It would be a little quick to have one come back next month, too. Maybe. Or you think?
Well, he sent this out to you guys ahead of time.
I did read through it.
I, I scanned the other ones, but I read, I read Douglas, because they were the only ones that had all the points that I was looking for. And I thought, by God, that is pretty comprehensive. They, somebody has taken a great deal of time to look at this and to, to prepare. And I thought they did a really good job on that one.
My colleague in Douglas County, she, she was telling me that it took her a long time to get that thing put together.
And, and that's the nice thing. It doesn't take us a long time to be able to sit down and read this and understand it.
Should we have a study session?
I would think so.
I would, I do have a quick question. Okay, so we did hear comments from the public that we would like to hear pros and cons of these types of projects being built. And then we also would like to hire consultants to monitor and regulate. So my question is, for example, this Douglas County guidelines that have already been put together, have they had studies done?
Sure.
Do they have, you know, i- in their regulations? Or do they have footnotes of, we had studies done by this department that provided these results? And that that's what based our guidelines, that's what we based our guidelines off of? So could we refer back to studies that they've done already?
Find out what their steps were. Yeah, I could, I could request it, that they provide that.
And then also, could we go ahead and draw up our own guidelines just based on that? And then also bring back some studies to say, here's what we would adopt...
To tweak it.
...this language...
Yeah.
...as our own. And then let's reference the studies that they've done. That way we could bring it back to the public next time.
Right. Use, use a base, like, you know, like, I don't want to say, I don't like picking on Douglas, because there, I gave you a whole lot of them. But I'm just saying, though, if, whichever format you want to use, what I'll do is, you can use that as a base and then alter it. If you feel like, you know, you can, we can modify it any way we want to. We don't want it to be a cookie cutter, you know? We want it to fit our community.
Right, yeah, because we need to listen to...
Yeah.
Because the first, the, the first thing on his list is, as to not have a detrimental effect on the rural character of the county. Well, that's a pretty, I don't know how you can have a study for that.
It's pretty subjective. The entire...
Who makes the decision, right?
Who makes that determination?
Right. Yeah, you get some general statements like that, and it's pretty tough to enforce.
Right.
So...
But I guess what I was trying to get to in that was, in general, are there areas of the county that you feel it could be a detriment to and areas that would not be, that would be more appropriate? Is what I was kind of trying to get you to think about.
A, a, for example, would be prime farmland versus range land.
Range, yeah.
Which, valid point. I mean, we're already chewing, and nobody's complaining about it, but we're already chewing up houses on the prime farmland in Celine County. Nobody's bitching about it.
Well, commissioners? Fire away with thoughts, ideas, comments, complaints? How do we want to proceed forward? I'd like to just see a study session.
Just to sit down and just discuss it?
And let's just go through it and talk about it. Get something that we can put toward the public, then bring the public in for review. We're not gonna review all this with the public.
No, no, no.
Like I say, I kind of like to see it kind of broken apart. I don't want to beat the dead horse over the battery storage. Let's get everything put together.
Yeah. So you're talking now about doing just a, it's, the study session would be open to the public. And it's just, and, and what you would do is just, it would be just a general, like we've done before in the past, which is just a general discussion amongst you, the, the board, and then reopen it again.
Let's go through one of these and discuss it, see how that fits us.
Okay.
So you just want to make the determination that each one of us will read through these? Have our comments?
We'll just have a study session. We'll just tear one of these apart and see how it relates to us. I'm just speaking out loud of, if, well, since we're just speaking out loud, having read these, I really think we should focus on Douglas, because it is the most comprehensive. And that, that's great.
Yeah.
That's great. Everybody agrees, let's do that. And then let's have a study session and just go it apart. Take out the items that doesn't fit Celine County, you know, add items that we do. Then we got a guideline we can put toward the public and decide whether or not they want us to do that.
Okay.
How soon are you wanting to see something in place?
Well, we've had, I already know one company that's, that's been, you know, I think, that's been looking at, I'm talking about a utility company, is, is investigating, you know, potential small, very small scale solar, which would be like on six acres or something like that. And right now, we don't have anything in place yet. They, they're, they're just thinking out loud. It's not anything concrete yet. But as, I know that's coming down the pike at some point. But anyway, that's, that's the other thing that you could look at as well, is distinguish, like on the solar, distinguish between the large-scale commercial and the small scale. Because I think, again, Douglas mentions they distinguish between the smaller acreages, and I think Allen does, too, smaller acreages that are like utilities, that utilities use, that are probably gonna, you know, would, would be tied into the grid. That are owned and operated by the utility company. That's separate from like the larger scale commercial jobs, so.
Staff, throw me an idea, motion?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, sure, sure. I'm gonna open up back to the floor since we have some discussion.
Just, just a question. So if somebody come to you tomorrow and said, I want to do this. I want, I want to fill out the paperwork for a CUP, where would we be at?
They can't do it.
Can't do it. We don't have one.
We don't have anything in place yet.
Okay. You, you would tell them...
Yeah.
We're not entertaining it because we don't have rules or...
At this point, we don't have anything in place. We are legally, we can't do that.
Okay. That's what I wondered.
We don't have an option to do that in the county.
Okay, okay.
That's kind of what we're saying now. We don't...
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure.
Right. Nobody has, if you wanted one, we couldn't give you one, because we don't permit it.
Bill DeSylvie, 4945 South Simpson Road, Gypsum. I'm liking the better approach this time around. I really am. But I know, like he said, the rural appearance of the county is very subjective. But to give you an idea, you know, if you wanted, if a homeowner put in 100,000 watts of solar, all right? That's 10,000 square feet, all right? You bump that up to a, one megawatt setup, and then you're talking about four entire acres being taken up. So I really think that the people, say, Great Plains, Kubota wants to put solar to mix in with their usual power source. That shouldn't be an issue for them, because they're responsible for it. But when you're talking about, you know, other types of utility scale, we need to really kind of hold the line on that for a while.
Good, very good point, very good point. There's just so many different aspects of this, between personal business and a, and a, you know, a business that's gonna do it as a business. This is a very good point. Other comments? Staff, how do you recommend we proceed then? We're wanting just to discuss it.
Your, your option would be, and, and this is what I was gonna recommend, option two, which is to table for further evaluation and discussion of the submitted information provided by staff. If you have any additional information you want me to provide for the next meeting, I can do that, too.
I, I think it would be helpful if we had...
Can we just have the study session to be...
Ken's talking.
Go ahead. I, I think it would be helpful before the study session if we had some more background on the information from Douglas County, what, where they developed theirs from, not just the document itself.
So it kind of sounds like maybe we're just gonna take the Douglas County one and kind of use that for a...
As a template for now.
...base that we're gonna discuss, Ken. Does that sound okay?
Yeah. If, if we, especially if we can get some of their background information, you know, to the...
We'll concentrate on that one to be our...
You're assuming they've got references on their, is that what you're wanting to look at, references?
Exactly.
What I would do is, I would talk to my cohort in Douglas County, and she would have, I would ask her what her process was in terms of getting information for, to develop their regulations, and then she can provide that to me if she's, you know...
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, that would be very helpful.
Good.
Then when we go to the public, we can say, you know, we, we didn't just copy Douglas County. We looked at their process.
Exactly. We'll tear it apart, discuss it.
And can we get the feedback from, from the public? Any studies that get forwarded on, to us from the public?
Yeah.
Just to be presented? Okay.
Sure. Whatever information I give you guys will be available to the public, too.
Okay.
And anything the public sends you is gonna be submitted to us?
Yes.
Okay.
So can we like have a study session before the meeting? Or just dedicate the first hour of the next meeting for study session?
Probably best to stay on schedule to keep the, our, our monthly meetings on par. So we're gonna, I would, I would recommend that you just do like you did that one meeting and just dedicate a certain amount of time for the, the study session at the regular meeting.
If we have applicants, we'll get those taken care of, and then we're gonna...
Yeah.
Put the meeting to a study session.
Right. And so far, there's nobody turned anything in for next month, so.
So everyone sound good to that?
Okay.
So what are we gonna do on that one that we're not doing, that we don't have to do right now?
What are we gonna do?
I mean, we're on an open session right now.
We're gonna table the motion and be prepared to come back the next meeting and discuss the one with the information he's gonna bring forward.
Okay.
Is that the, I'm asking.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah. No, that's, that's exactly what...
I agree.
And I've got down for the next meeting, where did Douglas County develop their regs? And I'll bring that. But was there anything else you wanted in addition to that?
I think it's great. We'll just have a study session, then we'll have something to provide to the public.
Sure.
And then bring it back for public comment, you know, after they've had time to digest it. Then we'll move forward.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to table. I can't make the motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I move that we table this, the, to a study session at the next meeting. We can bring the data together from staff and review it at that point.
And that item will be TXT 24-01.
Yes.
I'll entertain a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that we table TXT 2401 until the next meeting with a study session. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Any other items from staff?
Just that, just that the, I believe that we've, we've got the, the March meeting date as 3/26 of '24. And reappointments, I think we've heard pretty much from everybody about reappointments. And so everybody that's going to be reappointed will be reappointed in March. And other than that, that's all I've got.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second him.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimously, we are adjourned.